They want to come back? Well, because... Well, because people are coming back here. We cannot agree on that there, so I don't know if we're going to do it in open session. Do I have a motion to come out to open session? Do I have a motion to come out to open session?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to come out in open session.
Yes. At eight sixteen PM. Eight sixteen PM, do I have a second? Motion made by Ms. Francis Ford, seconded by Mr. Cantu, all in favor? Three, all against? Two. Clear to three, motion passes and we come back. Okay, do we come, uh, do we continue the conversation?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to take the opportunity to speak directly to Mr. Fishwood to share concerns about recent developments with the city council.
There's a point of order on this, but Mayor, this is not on the agenda.
Well, we're going to discuss this grievance, it's a grievance against...
Mayor, you made a motion to come back into open, we are done with that item.
The grievance is not on the agenda, this was the grievance process and the council was briefed on the grievance process. The grievance isn't on the agenda.
I mean, you're the lawyer, so...
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Do I have a comment on...
I'm not speaking, but I'm just trying to make a comment here.
Okay, point of order, this is no time for comment period.
Did it say that somewhere?
Yes, ma'am, it does, there is no comment period with that item that we just finished. So we can move on to the next item, Mayor.
No, there's always, we had a motion to come back. Yes, I made a motion to come back. And, uh, people need to know what happened back there, so...
Mayor, point of order, how what happened in the open session stays right there.
No, but he's just making a comment.
It's closed session consultation with attorneys, attorney-client privileged communication. Only the council's body can waive attorney-client communication, if you're familiar with your charter.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item C, the city council will need to post, uh, closed session pursuant to Texas Code Section 551.074, personal matters and city charter section 4.01, city manager and 4.05, city attorney to deliberate evaluation and duties of public, of a public officer of employment. Do I have a motion to go with seconded session?
Mayor, I'm requesting that my evaluation be done as a public hearing.
Okay, that's good. Do I have a, a second? Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Morones, all in favor? Four? Do you, was, I didn't take the call.
What is the motion for?
To have the, um, to have this in, uh, outside over here, in open session. Made by Lambert, seconded by...
Morones?
Morones? All in favor, to have it in open session, one, two, three, four, five. Let's have it in open session. Three and then four. So those two are done together, Mr. Santi?
No, you just did number three, I didn't, nobody asked me anything.
Three, and then, because it says four, the attorney...
It's a separate item.
Oh, that's a separate item, okay.
Mayor, I'm requesting my item as a public hearing allows the opportunity for the public to give comment as well.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead and, um... We will start with evaluation. Mr. Santi, do you take? Are you going to talk about this, or you want me to do it?
About, about the city manager's evaluation?
Uh-huh.
This is a consultation with attorney, this is personnel matters, it's the council's item.
So that means you don't get involved?
I may have comments.
Alrighty.
Citizens' comments.
Oh, now we can have comments, citizens' comments?
Yes, because she was supposed to... She was supposed to public hearing.
Okay.
It's a personnel matter, it's not a matter, it's not attorney-client business.
Okay, Monica, we're going to stop this.
I have citizens' comments.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alfonso Seneble, I am a city employee and I want to thank Monica Belize for her leadership and equal opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and city staff, my name is Allison Lambert and I am a local businesswoman here in Florisville. I appreciate the opportunity to address tonight, you tonight, as our city stands at a pivotal moment in its development. Florisville is currently at a crossroads and faces significant infrastructure challenges. The city is in pressing need of improvements to water and sewer systems as well as roads and road repairs. Access to reliable water and sewer services is essential for continued growth. Perspective businesses are hesitant to invest in Florisville without the assurance that utilities will be available, rather than relying on promises of future utility expansion. Over the past year, Monica Belize has served as interim city manager and has made notable progress that had previously been lacking. Her dedication to the future growth of Florisville has influenced businesses' decisions regarding relocating commerce to our town. Monica has been a committed employee of the city for twenty-four years, holding various positions at city hall, including city secretary, finance director, assistant city manager, and most recently interim city manager. Throughout her tenure, Monica has worked across multiple levels to benefit Florisville. She was instrumental in preparing the package that secured funding from FEMA for damages caused by the 2015 tornado. She also assisted with the 2018 annexation plan and has been diligently involved in developing Florisville's comprehensive plan and updating city ordinances. Monica has consistently prepared herself for the city's future growth by continuing her education and adapting to evolving needs. Since the departure of the previous city manager, Monica has taken on the responsibilities of two roles with limited support. As Florisville moves into its next phase, her extensive experience and longstanding dedication will be essential to ensuring that all future developments are in the best interest of the city's citizens, both current and future.
Thank you. Do I have any more?
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the issue of Monica. Uh, I don't remember how many years she's actually been with the city, but to her credit, she's gone through many managers, supervisors, working as a clerk. She's worked in the BD, she's worked in our finance office, she's worked in the front office, she's been a city secretary, assistant city manager, interim city manager. So throughout that career, she has proven herself as a very heavy worker. Uh, I believe also, if the opportunity offered itself, I think she become, came to become the city manager.
Thank you. Moving on, do I have any more, um... Comments from you? How about from the council?
I, I, I want to speak on behalf of Monica, as a city attorney. Um, I worked with the prior city manager, I've worked with Monica now. You know, I will first say that in, in Monica's first three months stepping into the role, I felt like she was tentative and, and, and kind of keeping the car on the road, a little uncertain. But after that point, she really seized the opportunity. Uh, we talked often about what her authority was, I assured her she had the same authority. There's no distinction between an interim and a city manager when it comes to power, authority, to make change and to do things. During this time, she's, she's been a significant one of all city accounts, she's pushed forward the comprehensive plan and managed things in order. But most importantly, she has been a leader in the most ethical sense, which I have to say has not always been the case. Some of the council members, I know the council member Morones, council member Lambert, were there at the end of the TML conference when Nerroton Jimenez was the president and they also got to hear a great presentation by Frank Ashley on ethical leadership. And why that matters is because being an ethical leader means not just doing what is popular or doing what's always been done, but it means what's doing what's right regardless of the possible personal cost to you. And, um, I've been extremely impressed and proud of interim city manager Belize for doing just that and standing up to even council members when necessary on behalf of her employees and putting herself out there to make sure that Florisville remains a safe place for all employees and a fair place for all employees and that the decisions are made in a transparent manner and the way they should be made, and so I commend her for that. Um, I work with cities all across the state of Texas and I've assured Monica that if her leadership is not good enough for Florisville, it's damn sure good enough for dozens and dozens of cities that I know would welcome her on the...
One more? Do I have anything from the council?
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
So, I want that, some of you up here got some really nice treatment and, you know, Monica's really attentive to you all. Um, I just want to point out that that hasn't been the case with me. There are several things here that I feel that, um, still could be worked on, um, a lot to learn. I know that seeing being a city manager is a tough job. You not only have to manage all the different personalities here, but you're also hearing different initiatives from everyone. So just a couple of things here that I would like to point out. And just things that, there was a question, what are the critical area for improvement? And for me, it was professionalism. As an interim city manager, the role demands a high standard of conduct, impartiality, and ethical leadership. During the rating period, there were instances where negative commentary about employees who report to you, shared with other staff members, that information. So I know that you think that you're saying it in confidence, it came back. The other thing I also want to point out is that you do engage in a political dynamics that appear to influence your decision-making and that's also important. And then the other thing I have is just, um... I, I don't know what's going on, I've never been asked to be part of any kind of initiative committee, anything of that sort. Although you have no problem speaking with some members more than, over than, than the others. So I don't feel I'm giving, getting acquited opportunity to do anything. I have a great skill set, there's a lot I bring to the city, but I feel that I'm not wanting. So, um, and that's just how I feel, very closed off, a lot of time your door is closed. The other feedback I get from the community is that they don't see you enough out there in the community. They want you to be the face of Florisville. What does that look like? Are you going to be out there, are you going to be approachable, or are you going to be friendly? Those are things that all come. So, uh, in saying that, I'm just going to say, um, you know, just be inclusive by engaging all council members equally and extending opportunities for involvement. The other big thing for me, I'm going to be honest, I had an issue with was during our budget season. That was the turnaround for me, and I'm sorry, but I'm going to say it. The thing that came before council was a budget to approve that included employee salaries. Now, we had about sixteen employees, I believe, I don't, approximately, that were below the, the minimum point. When I looked at that, it's, it's a no-brainer, right? Let's bring our employees up to date. What I had a problem with was the list that I had, I, there was a consultant that I had given our interim city manager, you know, and HR director, kind of a directive saying, hey, you know, if there's other employees that need to be brought up to the midpoint, they can be brought up to the midpoint, up to thirty percent. There were some positions, and I'll start with, uh, the assistant city manager position. And if you recall, the interim city manager's position, that's the old position that she had. There hasn't been anybody in that role since taking on the interim manager position. And it was, uh, requested twenty-two thousand dollars raise, that was requested for that position. Look, I'm just saying, the request appears to me excessive and it lacked justification given the vacancy, number one. And then, of course, it was kind of the same thing, there was a few other positions that were inflated. The administrative services director was one of them, it was inflated above the thirty percent. Again, I didn't get a justification, I asked for one back in August, I never received that. And that to me is, I'm not saying I would have said no, but I wanted to see written justification and what that looks like. So at least I felt better in making my decision, because it's really hard to give somebody a twenty-two thousand dollar raise and we don't even have guys in the field that make the minimum. So, it just seems over and over that this was put before your employees, and that worries me, because they are your employees. Last but not least, the other, um, big issue for me was an increase for a position that had been recently filled, um, by your former sister-in-law. This raises concerns about the appropriateness of timing. Uh, my understanding, and, and I will say, I got public calls for this. Excuse me. So one of the big issues, issues for me was, if you hired the individual, fine, so be it. But this individual was in the role for maybe approximately thirty to sixty days tops and that position was already on the list to get an, uh, an additional thousand dollar raise. So again, what I saw, in my opinion, was these figures suggested a pattern of inflated salary recommendations that exceeded the stated thirty percent midpoint adjustment goal. So, I didn't appreciate the lack of transparency and consistency in these proposals. It undermines trust in the compensation process and it raises serious questions about fiscal stewardship and adherence to policy. Again, that is my opinion, that's what I came across and that was the turning point for me. Because right there, I just saw a lot of things and putting yourself before employees and especially those that look to you and you're supposed to be the leader of this organization. The other thing, I don't even want to go there, but it's been on, off and on about the organizational structure. Again, the organizational structure was tied to our budget. And here's the thing, I wanted the organizational chart to give me some kind of, you know, it didn't seem like that, it seemed like we told you we didn't like it. Um, I wasn't here at that meeting, but I know another council member said, hey, take it back, it, it's just too much, what have you. I'm going to say this, there has been instances where we're changing your chart. I want to make sure that we are actually changing it because there is actually justification behind it, there is actually a purpose. I, I don't want to go into the last city manager, you know, change things and, you know, so forth. So if that is the case, um, how do we allow employees to go ahead and start doing that when we don't have approval, number one? So it's really hard for me to believe that. But, again, that's what was brought to me, I didn't like it. I don't like making uninformed decisions and on a whim without any documentation justification. So, um... Let's see. So, so I do want to tell you this as well, and just some things that I saw, and, and I'm going to bring up TML as well, because I know that a lot of us were, were all there. But there has been some concern that, um... That a contractor was authorized, a contractor, temporary, temporary employee was authorized to attend the TML conference at the city's expense. So, again, the authorized contractor was from FEDC and to me, this decision raises serious concerns about, you know, the misuse of public funds and blurring the, you know, the blurring of organizational boundaries. So, my thing is, is that I know it's hard to tell somebody no or say like, I, I don't know. But as a city manager, I think that it's critical, it's imperative that these conversations be had. And I don't think it would have been a big deal had you had that up in the beginning, rather than wait and then find it on a, you know, on an evaluation. And then, of course, we've had, um... You know, I, I am going to say, we had an employee who previously worked here on two separate occasions. My understanding, he, while he left on his own, was rehired for the third time. And that employee ended up being arrested in a different county while operating the city vehicle. Again, this happened under your leadership. And again, if the employee worked for us twice, what kind of decision-making or what was the process and thinking about, you know, I should hire him a third time? I get, I, I understand he left on his own at court, I understand that. But still, these are decision-making process that, you know, what are you using to evaluate that? And I would hope that the employee worked here twice before and he would have known. And I know you can't foresee, but those are some judgment calls that I saw that I don't agree with and I just think they could have been handled differently. So anyways, I will stop there, but those are the things that I see. The other thing I want to mention in getting this evaluation, you know, the totals are listed across, but I'm having to do my own math to come down to see what each council member rated are, you know, so, again. I, I don't know how things are done here, but I, I don't like coming in looking at evaluation and having to do my own math. I'm going to go ahead and stop there with the comments, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. So, Mayor, if, if I may respond to her comments? Okay, so, um, uh, thank you for your comments and I have read your evaluation. And to the budgeting process, whenever we went over salaries and compensation for the employees, I know you pointed out, um, an assistant manager's position, administrative services director, the house table clerk, the water supervisor, the municipal court clerk, and an administrative secretary. Whenever the council, um, decided on the, on the, the pay increases for the employees overall, a three percent pay increase was decided. And it was decided that per the pay study, those that were below the minimum would be brought to that minimum rate. The mid-rate was completely taken out of the budget. It wasn't anything that we were even going to be putting in or anything that was going to be considered. So therefore, and, you know, the understanding that I had was, that, that was, that was completely gone. We weren't even discussing that anymore. We were doing the three percent and those below the minimum that we brought to the minimum.
Right.
Um, then, as far as the organizational structure, I know you mentioned that, um, you had talked to some different supervisors asking if certain individuals were...
I heard.
Were reporting to them. They, they weren't reporting to them and that was what we were trying to do, was put them under the right leadership. The duties were being performed, but they weren't reporting to the correct leadership. And then as far as the, um, individual or the contract employee, temporary employee that had attended the TML conference, that individual was, had actually been a board member that had already been decided on to attend the TML conference. But there is actually no policy currently in place for the city of Florisville that states that a temporary contract employee cannot be sent to training or conferences. And, and I can give you, um, documentation where we have done it before. In January of twenty twenty-three, we sent a contract employee to a training where the city did pay for the registration for the training and the hotel expenses as well. So I just, I wanted to share that information with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but I do want to clarify, back to the budget process, I understand that it was, the minimum was, was approved and so forth. My point was, you still brought it forth to try to get up to the midpoint. And that's where, for me, even though I know it didn't go through, it still lies with me as to, you know, it, it, I didn't like that, especially when employees weren't making their minimum.
Okay.
But thank you for the explanation.
Do I have any more comments? I, I have a comment. I feel that we should have evaluated Monica sooner, that way, you know, if we had any issues, you would have worked on them. And, um, and I know this role, uh, is very demanding, as in hard balancing multiple responsibilities and addressing, uh, many individual roles. But consistency, fairness, and sound judgment are essential to succeed. So you, you could, so you can keep every work in the, that would be very, very good. So, you know, I know you've done a tremendous, uh, you've done a good job, but there are, you know, the, you know, issues that if we don't, you know, I don't feel like, um, I, we, they like you, I, everybody likes you, but, you know, criticism is just for your benefit, so you'll know what, you know, everyone's looking at. It's not, not to hurt you or anything, it's just to help you, that's how I feel. So, um, you know, just so you know.
I have a question, ma'am.
Uh-huh, go ahead.
I'd like to know why my evaluation wasn't included. If you give an explanation on that, where did go, Mr. Santi?
Yeah, the explanation on that is because you are the subject of a pending grievance that has not yet been, uh, resolved and your participation, uh, given the comments and...
But we didn't vote.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me?
We didn't vote or recuse?
We were in the meeting...
Not, not yet, no, but I, that was my recommendation that was before you, that if, if he doesn't voluntarily recuse himself in the process to keep the city from facing an additional retaliation claim like the one we have pending right now for the same scenario, that the council take a vote as to whether or not he should be allowed to participate. So that's, that's the expla, I mean, that's legal advice, I mean, you, you're free to ignore it, I mean, you have to...
Thank you for that legal advice, but it's hard to take advice from a city attorney who I don't feel represents council as a whole, but instead maybe represents one of our members and not a body as a whole. It's hard to come to you, Mr. Santi, and really take it and know that that's your best put forward and that you're really looking out for all of us.
I'm going to call a point of order, we're, we're on the city manager...
That's okay, let, let her make her comment.
We're on the city manager evaluation, we're getting away from the subject of...
They're asking, the question is, Juan was his name, his evaluation?
The question was answered, Mayor, respectfully.
Okay, well, uh, I think Felix can turn around and answer why, you know, he's asking a question. And he is our lawyer.
Well, if I may, I have a comment on our city manager, that's the topic that we're on, so I would like to make a comment, thank you.
But wait a minute, you don't have to go, wait a minute, hold on, Felix, are you finished?
Well, I'm just trying to get a, I mean, is that going to be the final answer first? And did, was, was this thing already decided? I mean, just it's already decided, it's a done deal?
There's documentation at your chair with a recommendation that staff followed.
It was a recommendation.
That staff followed, yes.
I'll, I'll address it from the podium.
Excuse me?
I'll address it from the podium. So, yeah, so, so we'll do this out here, we tried to do it in closed session about the grievance process, but when a grievance is filed...
Mr. Santi, I don't feel that's in the best interest of the...
I don't feel it's in the best interest of the MC either, but Mr. Cantu wants an explanation as to why his evaluation was included and it's because his evaluation was so egregiously...
Mr. Santi, I'm going to call a point of order because we have taken an oath to uphold the constitution and to make legally sound decisions. So if this council is willing to hear this information in open session, I recommend they take a vote on it.
I don't disagree.
So I'm going to make a motion So I'm going to make a motion for this information to be disclosed in open session. To answer Mr. Councilmember Cantu's question in open session, I make a motion.
You make a motion to, uh, are we going to open, uh, item B? Because that's what we're discussing, because we're going to be in a closed session. So are we going to have two motions?
I make a motion to pause the current item C and revert back to item B per Councilwoman Cantu's request to have it in open session.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor, I'm all in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. Three.
I can raise my hand, ma'am.
Well, I'm waiting for you to raise it, because you made the motion, oh, well, it is a matter that you, you made it to happen. Well, so I, do I have a, there's a motion to bring this item B out in public? Do I have a motion, the motion is made by Ms. Jimenez, uh, uh, Councilwoman Jimenez, seconded by Mr. Lambert. All in favor? Raise your right hand, one, two. Okay, then, uh, motion filled.
Okay, so we can address your question.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion and we continue this in executive session.
I have a motion.
Mayor, Mayor, a point of, point of order, that would be a motion to suspend the current item.
No, you, the, the current item is on pause. We already made a motion on that, it's on pause. So, um, I have a motion on the floor to go back to item B. From Mr. Cantu, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Cantu to go back to executive session and do items that council will meet in closed session pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the procedure steps and legal options related to grievance filed against councilmen. Made by Mr. Cantu, seconded by, uh, Ms. Francis Flores. All in favor of, raise your right hand. One, two. All against? Motion filled to go back. Okay, now, we're going back to item C. The council will meet, I mean, we're already, do we, do I have a motion to go back to item C? I don't have a motion to go back to item C. Okay, then it'll say pause till win. Till next meeting.
The floor's open for elections.
I, well, there's no motion. I mean, I'm asking if we, uh, if we return to item C, because it's on pause.
Evaluation or
Yes, that's evaluation, uh, evaluation, evaluation to continue.
I made the motion, but Mayor, to me, it's already I don't want to go that way or this way now. You know, we were, we were out there in the back, and don't, don't get me wrong, that, you know, we're in the middle of a war. But we were out there trying to figure out, and they wanted to have it out here. They had the opportunity to, to ask the questions like their, they didn't want to ask the questions. So now we want to go back again, and it's, it's kind of really, you know, uh, it, it's kind of confusing. And, and it's probably out there probably laughing at us, you know. And it, it's not funny that, that there's citizens over, out there, people watching, a, and, and we're, we, we can't get it right. You know, I, I'm going to make the motion if you want to continue, and then it's up to you all. You know, but the thing is, we, we need to get some water in here, and I mean, I'm not the mayor, nothing I said, but
Yeah, I agree with you.
But, but we need to, I'll make the
Motion to return. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Morones, seconded by Lambert, to return to item C. At, um, Okay, let's continue.
Mayor, I, I have received my packet of evaluations and
Not happy with that?
I'm good with this, and I know that we've been a lot of back and forth on this, so, thank you.
I have a comment, so
Go ahead.
Well, we need to take a vote to come back, so we should probably vote on that before I start talking.
So motion made by, uh, by, uh, Lambert, seconded by, uh, motion made by Mario, seconded by Lambert, right? All in favor? They're returning back, and now Monica said she's happy with it, we're, um, so we're going to adjourn on this one.
I have a comment. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, one second, Mayor, please. Uh, it's been a lot of accusations thrown around tonight, uh, it's been a long night. But I can tell you that nobody is perfect, and I believe that this interim city manager's been doing really good, especially with the heavy presence of council through, in, throughout the city hall all the time. So, it's kind of hard to do your job when someone's over your burnt neck all the time. So, that's just my opinion, but, you know, there will never be a perfect city manager in this world. The only thing that she can do is grow. You know, I think that this evaluation may have come at a lo, at a, maybe a prolonged rate. Maybe we should have had this with this new council, that way this new council could set some expectations before we come out here and just start hammering down on her. And we didn't give, we weren't, we didn't have that opportunity. So here we are. You know, I really hope, Monica, that you aren't taking, you take this, the, the criticism, the compliments, and you keep doing the job you're doing, because I do think you're doing a great job. I, I will never think you're going to be a perfect city manager, because no one will ever be one. But the only thing you can do is grow. And I really, really, I love you here, you're doing a great job, keep doing what you do.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, I mean, I love seeing Monica's been for almost a year, uh, pushing the city forward. But, you know, I'm always a bad guy, but I, I, I go out there and I ask people, you know, what they want. And sometimes they're telling you this, telling you that, and it still kind of comes from my heart. As long as I feel I'm okay with it, I'm okay with it, but, you know, regardless of what happens, you know, Monica, you, you've done a fair job. And, uh, it, it's just a hard situation. We, we had a, a committee that, that looked at 29 applications, they picked the top seven. We're going to get into seven, I don't know who's the seven, but regardless of how I vote or whatever, I mean, it's, she's still our, our, will still be, I'm not saying that I will vote against or whatever. I still, I still doing my investigation on what is the right thing for the city. You know, sometimes I think, well, you, we need, I, I hear it, Dr., we need, uh, leadership that, that has no talent, nobody. Now, I, I know that Monica is, is a good assistant city manager, maybe another person coming that could work ahead with her, give her a little more push, and she, and I don't know what's going to happen, but what I'm saying is, and one thing I would tell Monica, if I, if I have to say something, we don't have to roast somebody in front of public. You go out to her office, hey, can I speak to you? And I asked her, did, did they come to you and ask you the wrongdoing that you're doing? And I think her answer was no. So, my thing is, whatever I have, that I have to tell Monica, I don't have to, I'll say it back there. When I go back there, I might say, hey, you know what, you need this. But I'm very proud of her, what she's done, but I also have to respect also the people that took their time to come and look at 29 applications, and, and we're thinking from there. But for, for now, you know what you're doing, and, and see what, what we're at. You put the pictures off, but, you know, I, I apologize to the public out there, they're kind of, we don't have to worry some popcorn or something, but I got confused, and they're like, wait a minute, wait a minute, but anyways, that's what I wanted to say, but I don't know what I want to do, so anyway, anyway, thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment?
Yes.
And a recommendation. Normally, these things occur in an, in executive session behind closed doors, because it's, it's personal. Not everyone wants to hear this, this reminds me of, thank you, Monica, for reminding me of the Hennetta Trinity, some, we did this out in the open. And even though some of her ratings were low, there were no bashing comments, it was just the, what have you done, what do you need to improve on? And, um, working with different city managers, there are always some, there's always something different to work on, there's always something to improve on. We, as human beings, when we know better, we do better. And sometimes we decide not to do better, and that's when we need to get called onto the carpet. I will say, um, I do, I did listen to, um, the other councilman's comments, and I, I will say that I, I, you know, I just disagree with one of them in particular, where the constituents have said that the face of the city is the city manager. I don't completely agree with that 100%. I feel the face of the city is the mayor, or the council members, or the employees, or the other community activists. We are all the faces of this community, it's not just resting on one person that gets paid. More so, I mean, the mayor's out there, she's out, you see her online, she's out there and about at different events. That's what people wanted. Why did the previous city manager go to everything? Because we didn't have a mayor that went to everything like our mayor does. So I, I disagree with that comment in that sense, it's great for you to go out to events, that's fabulous, but it doesn't rest on you, that, that, that's on all of us. That's on all of us as a community to show up to events and to show up for each other. There's also, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the, and what, what the people don't know, since we are in open, what the people don't know is that we have the evaluation, they were given to HR. HR took each of those sections, because they're just different sections, and in each section, there's about four or five questions where she's rated for each form, so she took the averages for each of those areas. Councilmember Floyd has mentioned that there were no averages. If you take the averages from all of, if you add up everything on here, it totals over 220 something points, which is not normal for an evaluation. Evaluations total 100 points, that way you can get averages. This one doesn't work this way. So my recommendation to this council is, if you are not satisfied with this evaluation, let's look at, at instilling another one. This one was changed, um, with the last council, was brought forward by the city manager, who pulled it from TCMA. So if this is not up to standards of this council, I recommend this council change the evaluation. One thing that I will make note on here, as I see the ratings of everyone's, it, it surprises me. It surprises me at some of these extremely low ratings, because I feel, in my personal opinion, and I've never rated employees that low to be zeros and ones, you practically have to be dead to get zeros and ones. I do not find that appropriate, it works very well if you say, I don't feel you are meeting the standard here. So what do we need to work on, what does that look like? I'm just going to give a couple of examples of what I said. And so there are questions of what are her strengths, what are her weaknesses, what does she need to work on? Monica is going through her training right now, and congratulations to Monica, she will be graduating her training. So that is, that is fabulous, that is what you want to see in all of your employees, is to further your education. That way, they can improve their services for the entity. One of the things that I have said, so, critical improvement. It's critical to convey these complex issues to the council in a way that promotes full understanding. And I say that to you, and I say that to every presenter here, for that informed decision-making, as we've heard Councilwoman Fordis saying. So this can include awareness of risks, consequences associated with each option, and this can be done during a meeting or presentation, or right before a CMA item. So council does not always think in terms of what decisions or lack thereof decisions will impact the city immediately and in the long term. I've mentioned before, the decisions we make now will affect us five, 10, 20 years from now. We are dealing with consequences of decisions that were made five, 10, 20 years ago. So it's critical that we all understand what we're deciding on up here. I've also, um, made a note that, um, well, one, I asked for a better copy of this PDF, because as you, as council can look at mine, I tried to edit this PDF, and it just did not work for me, so that was my one solidified request. I did mention to consider adding emphasis on improving internal communication and staff readiness. So right, you know, regular updates and briefings from the staff are, are only going to make council more comfortable with decisions. Also, offering targeted training and encouraging cross-department collaboration. That can build confidence and consistency across the team, can empower staff with the right information and clear guidance. I do think that it's very important that staff that are working with vendors, business owners, community members, are able to communicate the correct information. And sometimes that requires us to take a step back and say, let me find out. And so I have heard from business owners and community members how when they interact with different departments, that they've seen differences. They've seen differences in that they no longer get the, I don't know, they get the, well, actually, this is how we do this. They're provided with information, and that is something that has been lacking in the city. And so I think that is a tremendous improvement that we've seen throughout the, all of the departments. I've also asked for recommendations. Uh, you heard me ask the, um, financial consultant about her recommendation. I've asked Monica about recommendations out in the open, and she's giving them. She does not deter to what council thinks, well, it's whatever the council decides. Council can't make a decision unless there's a recommendation from the city manager. So I, I really appreciate that, and I, um, applaud you for that, and, and just keep going, and just keep improving the city.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, do you can vote on that already? Was it, we have voted, okay, the motion was made by Bunny. Okay. There's no motion, I just, I'm mad. Okay, so move on to item four. Been a long night, so. Item four, city attorney, um, we're going to go through the, the same ones
Yeah, I asked, I asked that I be placed on the agenda when I saw that someone had placed Monica on the agenda after she'd been doing the job for 11 months, and on the same night that, that you'd be looking at applications. So I said, hey, please place me on there as well. Um, and though I don't have a right to go into the back and do this in closed session, I strongly recommend that you allow me to do so, and I would ask that the council vote on whether or not I can be present in the back to do this, rather than do this in public.
Well, I would rather us go in the back and talk about it, and then we'll call you back in there?
Well, then, we'll just do it in public, then. We can either take a vote and allow me to be in the back, or we can do it in public.
Okay, let's take, okay, we'll take a vote, okay. The city council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Code, uh, Section 551.074, Personal Matters and City Charge, Section 4.01, either, um, with a city attorney and, and it says 401, city manager interim, well, it just says city manager, and 4.05, city attorney to deliberate the evaluation and release of a public officer or employee. City attorney, Pete, uh, Daniel Santini, and then it's got the rest of the here from David Navarro Gria, or Nelsan P., and say, say. Do I have a motion to go to the back?
Yes. Yes, I'll make a motion for us to go to the, to go into executive session at 9:05 PM with the city attorney present with us.
Uh, All in favor? Second, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, second, second by, motion made by Mr. Lambert, seconded by Ms. Jimenez, all in favor? Um, Monica, yes, yes, yes? Four. Four, Felix? Yes?
He didn't vote.
Oh, he didn't vote. Are you all the same?
We're the same.
No, that's The motion passes for, for the last.